Can you give Casair a call? I tried calling his cellphone and just got a voicemail. Maybe, my phone seems to work on it once too anyway. Okay, seems approximately 5 after 7 we'll open this meeting. Attendance on the board right now is Dan, Jerry, Bob, Peter, myself. Alright, why don't we get to the, why don't we get to the town minutes and get those over done with? I have 1, 2, I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, is that right? Anybody have a chance to read these over? I read through Monday, September 11th, that appeared to be okay. Anybody find any changes, deletions, additions, or corrections? Is that a no? No? I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes of September 11th?
I'll make a motion of September minutes of September 11th.
Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor to accept the minutes of September 11th, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, to zip. The minutes of Monday, February 10th. Any changes, additions, deletions, cor- corrections? I read through them quickly, I didn't find any. What was that?
It's 2013.
Before our time.
I have 2014. I didn't find any changes.
No.
I'll accept the, a motion to accept the minutes of February 10th, 2014.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of February 10th, 2014.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
3, 0, 0. Monday, March 10th, 2014. I didn't see any changes, do you see any? I read through it quick. Oh my God, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of March 10th, 2014.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of March 10th, 2014.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. The minutes of Monday, April 14th, 2014. I did not find any problems with that one. Anybody have a motion to accept the minutes of April 14th, 2014?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of April 14th, 2014.
In a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor to accept the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the minutes of Monday, May 20th, 2013. I didn't see any problems with that one. Accept a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of May 20th, 2013.
In a second?
I wasn't present.
Holy cow.
It's you and me. Aye.
I guess you second your own.
Okay. Pete, how do you feel about Monday, June 10th? Looks like.
Holy cow.
Aye, 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 will accept the minutes of Monday, June 10th, 2013. Aye.
Aye.
Passes.
I'll make a motion for that. I don't know if we can.
July 29th, 2013. You're there.
I'll make a motion to accept July 29th, 2013.
In a second. And all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Done. What do we have for bills? Why don't we get them done?
For this petition coming up.
One that's coming up?
The one that's for tonight.
Oh.
To bring the paper.
Bills, minutes. Did you get a hold of him?
Excuse me?
Did you get a hold of him?
No.
Did he answer? Alright, let's do some mail. Memo to Selectmen from the ZBA, proposed zoning changes for outdoor events. We sent that off too, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, did we get a response from them or anything?
Just a sounds good.
Just a sounds good?
Yep. Sounds good, thanks.
We met, we met with them, what was that, the 26th? So they, they did think that the board had some pretty good ideas. We sounded good. They reviewed them, what's that?
No complaints.
No.
Not that I know of.
Good stuff. Charlie Seelick memo 914, Form A Planning Board, 314 Plymouth Street.
Multi-family, John Peck, I guess?
To the Planning, Zoning, Billing Inspector, Conservation, from Charlie Seelick, dated September 14th. The Halifax Board of Selectmen is in receipt of the Planning Board approval of a Form A subdivision for lots at 314 Plymouth Street, Assessors Map 63, Lot 6. The Board has no objections to the subdivision of this land. However, this parcel contains a large amount of wetlands. It was then used for agricultural purposes and the land was significantly altered for these purposes. Under state law and regulations concerning wetlands, this is allowed. But under the same laws and regulations, before further development can take place, the wetlands must be restored before non-agricultural use is considered. While the subdivision of this parcel is not development, the tendency is that one development follows the other subdivision, as there are few other reasons to subdivide the land. The Board's expectation is that proposals for development would be considered in the near future and that the wetlands issue should be resolved before any approvals are granted.
Did that same piece of land here?
Yeah, that's the same one, I believe. It's the same general one, I don't know how they're dividing it. I haven't seen the new division of the lots or anything, but.
Yeah, you saw it last meeting.
It's what?
You saw the Form A last meeting.
Oh, was it the last meeting? Was that the?
About the two lots, is that what it is?
Two buildable, two.
Yeah, one might get.
Okay. I don't think we have to respond to that, I think we're all set.
The next, um, needs your signatures?
Signatures?
Yes, that is, um, Town Accountant needs to.
Oh, authorized signatures on file in Accountant's Office. Those in my office need to be updated to be in compliance with Mass General Law. The Town's Accountant Office must keep on record signatures which are authorized to approve the payment of the bills payroll for each department committee and whatnot. Do we ever form to do that?
Right on.
Oh, here it is, right here. Please list the names of everyone on your Board Committee or Commission below. Alright, we can fill all that out and then we'll have everybody sign it. Alright, what time is our first meeting? 7:05. Let's do that one. 7:05 renewal permit number 461, David and Nancy Samia, 51 Pratt Street? Mr. and Mrs. Samia?
Yeah.
That's on Main Street, 51 Pratt Street, In-Law and Rule.
Okay, we don't have to, everything's, this is their new completed form?
Yes.
The owners continue to occupy the principal, the residence of the in-law? Yes. The major utilities continue to be shared, electric and heat, water, yes? Everything else is yes? Persons related to the owner or occupant of the existing single-family dwelling is related either by blood or marriage, yes? Do I have a motion to renew the in-law apartment permit at 51 Pratt Street in Halifax?
I'll make a motion to renew the permit, number 461, 51 Pratt Street, in-law apartment.
There's a, the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And seconded to renew the in-law permit located at 51 Pratt Street. Uh, the all five members will be voting on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 5 to 0 is a 0. Do we need the signatures on the back here? Are we good? We're good. Thank you. Alright, let's move right on. Let's go to, seeing that it's 7:15, the variance, petition number 870, Bruce and Sarah Nobles, 55 Lingan Street. Hi, come on in. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Petition number 13, good, thank you. Alright, let me, let me read this and then go from there. Petition number 870, is that correct? Yes, it is. Add a 9 foot by 14 foot mudroom to the right side of the house, with a 4 by 14 deck on the right side. Is that it?
That's it.
The notice of petition. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 16th, 2017, at 7:10 PM and meeting with number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Bruce Nobles to build an addition for a mudroom and deck to be located at 55 Lingan Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Bruce and Sarah Nobles of 55 Lingan Street, Halifax, Mass, O2338. As shown on Assessors Map 52, Lot 277. Title reference, Book 30732, page 154. The applicant seeks a variance/special permit for an addition of a 9 foot by 14 foot mudroom with a 4 foot by 14 foot deck in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax under Sections 167, 8, A and C, and Sections 167, 11. Area is owned residential, petition number 870. Hi. So, Mr. Nobles?
Yes.
You got a blueprint here? You got one? Where are you, on Lingan?
Um, we're just left to the beach.
Corner of Lingan 6.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, Mr. Nobles, want to tell us, give us a little breakdown of what we're talking about here, what would you like to do?
Uh, yeah, so, mudroom, we just need the space, a place to, because right now we're. We, right now we enter into the kitchen, um, so we have no place to really kind of take off boots and hang coats and all that stuff, but we need a place to, to do that. That's really all we're looking to do on the.
And as you're standing on Lingan Street and looking at the house, this is, it's on the right head side?
So we're not getting any closer to Lingan, but we are getting closer to 6.
Okay. So, you are varying, so we make it correct. Unfortunately, you have two frontages. Yeah, but it's a, it's a front, from 50 feet to 9 feet. Yeah, we got a.
It's only on this one up here. Yeah, I got that, I got the same one, you do.
In the application, it doesn't say what we're varying it from. From something to something. We have to include that.
It's in, it's in the denial letter, it looks like, but it's not in the, in the notice.
No, you know what, I think.
I think, I think.
We missed that it was considered a frontage.
Alright, sorry, I missed it.
This is requiring a variance from the setback from, from 30 to 19, and.
It would just be 50.
But the, uh. But the plot plan shows 20. So what are we varying? Are we going to vary at 19, or are we varying at 20?
We, we usually give them an extra foot. We've always done that in the past, just for wiggle room. That's what the Billing Inspector has always done in the past, give them an extra 6.
If they use less than that's terminally signed.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, in case they go over, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah.
So we're, we're varying it, we put in there varying to 19 feet. They only need 20, but there's that little bit of wiggle room. It's been common practice.
Alright, we have to fix this.
Well, the, the hearing is, what's.
The variance.
What's publicized isn't necessarily the, the setback. It's just the, the fact that they're applying for.
But in the public notice, it's not saying what we're varying, or what's being applied for.
No, you're right.
Yeah.
Which, which might give us the wiggle room to do it today, if we want.
Is it spelled out on its place, or it's in the application? Tell me, yes.
Yeah, well, it's in the denial letter itself. From 30 feet to 19 feet. And again, I think, yeah. We missed that it was on the second frontage. But we do have the variance of the 19 feet. To 19 feet.
Well, what I think we have to do is, uh, correct this and, uh, put it in the application that we, uh, under Section 167, allowing requiring a variance of the front setback on 6th Avenue from 50 feet to 19 feet.
Does that have a plan showing that?
We have it written in pen. What is the pleasure of the Board? Let me, uh.
The house is only a 32 inch.
The deck is already 6 or 8 feet, so.
Okay, the way I look at it is we have an option. I think, uh, if we, uh, what I believe, in my experience, what the Board should do is request from the applicant where it's a, a change of conditions that they put in writing that, uh, we're changing the application. You know, you're, we're correcting the application. We'll need you two to sign it, you know, saying that, uh, want to correct my application on the, for the variance to read from, uh, 19 feet on the front setback from 50 feet to 19 feet. Do you, do you understand what we were talking about?
It's on the side though, it's not.
Well, see, when, when you have two streets, you don't have a side.
Got it.
You have, you have two frontages.
So you're technically supposed to be 50 feet back from each?
Front, so, yes, so.
So even though we're already inside that 50 feet, we still have to put it where it is 50 feet?
That's exactly what it is. Because what you have is, you don't have 50 feet in the front, it's not non-conforming. And even, even right.
Not conforming everywhere but at the back.
God bless you. You have 33 feet, no you don't either.
No, yeah, it's not conforming everywhere but at the back.
Right, so, uh, yes, if we could, uh, put that, uh, in writing, I'd like to correct. And then, uh, if you could print your name and sign it, if the other both you wanted to need?
Yes.
Then we need both signatures, if you could please. That way we have that in the file, so that, uh, we're not just making stuff up as we go. Alright, now that we got that squared away, do you have questions, uh, from the Board to the applicants? Hubble, what do we have for foundation?
Uh, it's going to be footings.
Footings?
Pre-caps.
Uh, the mudroom, it's all heated?
No.
No?
It's going to be insulated, but not heated.
Okay.
Basically, it'll be like a.
Electricity?
Um, they'll.
Not.
Yeah, I mean, yes, there'll be a light.
Light, yeah.
There'll be lights, but that's.
Okay, the deck off the back? The, or the deck is, on the side?
Yeah, that's, that's just a, some places to step up and get into the room.
Yeah, I guess it's required for any kind of new building, so that's, I mean, otherwise we would just put stairs up there since there has to be something on there.
Has to be a landing.
Yes, a landing, we just figured we'd extend it to full length so that we'd have access to our backyard.
Okay, it's not enclosed or anything like that?
Yeah, it's going to be open.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else? Any more questions?
Is this a situation where they have to inform the butters? Yeah, have you spoken to your butters?
Well, they have. Well, they're.
Yeah, I mean, the, the actual neighbors that, that can see it, yes. But, I mean, I guess, weren't they supposed to send out a notice?
They were notified, you just didn't have the.
What was your, what was your feedback from them, anything at all?
Different.
No problem?
I mean, really, the only people that can see it are, live behind us. Um, and then we've got the beach on the other side. So there's no, there's the, that side of the house has no neighbor, except for town land.
Yeah, and, and nobody's concerned with it.
Okay, anybody else? We're good? Cherry, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright, it's normally of the, uh, the practice of the Board that, uh, we go out and do a site inspection unless, uh, there are members of the Board that are familiar, myself included, I'm very familiar with that area. Uh, I can attest to the fact that, uh, I do think, uh, the mudroom in the addition, you know, was certainly within the established character of the neighborhood. There's plenty out there. I don't believe, uh, it would derogate from the intent of the bylaw and, uh, the hardship being, uh, I think due to the topography of the, uh, of the land and the non-conformity size of the lot. It, uh, it certainly limits them to, uh, where and how they could put the addition on. So, uh, unless, uh, somebody else feels they would like to go out, uh, and take a look at the site, I would accept the motion to, uh, if someone would like to waive the onsite. Uh, it's up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, there's a motion on the floor and a second to waive the onsite inspection. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 5 to 0. Basically what that did is it saved you a month. Because we would have had to go out, take a look at it, and then come back for the next meeting, so that just canceled out 30 days. Quick and simple. The only other thing is, uh, I was thinking the same thing, whether or not it, uh, we have to decide, I think, as a Board, my own, my opinion, and certainly take feedback from the other members. Is, uh, as far as re-advertising this, do we feel that this is, this correction is a substantial change? Or do we feel that, uh, you know, basically the, uh, notification in writing on the Board where we're correcting the application, actually nothing's really changed on the application other than the actual wording? Uh, how do the members of the Board feel about, uh, accepting in the, the application and the advertisement as presented? Or do you feel it should be re, uh, re-advertised?
I think we can accept it as presented, I mean, we made the technical correction. And I think that's suffice.
It's got the sections outlined enough.
Yeah.
I hope the butters were informed.
Well, the, the public hearing too, has no mention of the actual setback. So I think that changing that isn't really going against with public hearings saying that the deck and the mudroom are, are still as advertised. So I don't think we're changing anything while we advertise. So I, I don't think it changes anything.
We'll have to be careful on that in the future, because we do have to.
Right, yeah.
List exactly how we, uh, we're doing that, what we're voting on, and what they, we do, we have to be careful. Okay, uh, that, uh, works for me. I think, uh, I don't know if we should actually take a vote on that or not, it was, it was discussed. It, it, I think you, you have to know also that any substantial change or anything real derogation from what you applied for and what we vote on. Like, uh, for example, you decide to go 15 feet closer than, than they designated 19, because of, who knows? You know, because of construction.
It might get bigger.
Any.
Might get smaller. Might get smaller.
Any substantial change to it does have to come back to the, uh, to the Board and as long as you know that, then, uh, right up front, then. Alright then, I'll, uh, I'll accept, uh, a motion regarding petition number 870.
Uh, I'll make a motion to accept petition number, uh, 870, uh, as presented and clarified.
I'll second it.
Clarified and corrected, how about that?
Yeah, as presented and clarified and corrected.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, uh, and seconded to accept petition number 870 as, as presented. Uh, we'll go through a voice vote, Dan?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
5, 0, 0. Okay, there is a process now.
Decision letter is in there.
Is what?
The decision letter for you guys to.
We can do that. Decision, what's that?
Can we have the whole folder?
Yes, you can. Today's the 16th? Who's the basketball player? How old?
7.
And he can beat you, can't he? Couple. Okay, uh, how, how are we doing this? What do they have to do? Do they have to, um, bring this down to the?
Yes, I have a little checklist for them.
Alright. There's a, uh, is it 20 or 21?
20-day waiting period.
20-day, yeah, waiting period, uh, so after the 20 days goes by, you, it'll explain it all in there, but there, it's just, uh, gives the butters an opportunity, if they want to appeal our decision, they, they certainly have that right to do it. Other than that, you're all good.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you, Charlie.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Alright, what else do we have?
You can send me a copy on the bottom.
Two, like mudroom additions and uh
And I'm gonna take the deck, the badass. She's still running, and I didn't pick it up. And obviously the
You never know.
If the majority of people need to sign, maybe the bills?
Yes. No, it's three signatures required. Yeah, three members signing.
Being able to sign the bills, I just wanna understand.
What else do we have?
So, there's this um, site plan from nine thirty-four Plymouth Street.
It's just a notification that the final site plan was completed and signed by the plan board.
Nine thirty-four Plymouth Street?
Yeah, that's the Halifax Mini Storage.
The Halifax Mini Storage.
Is that the long dog guy, Morgan Equipment?
Yeah, I think it's over by there, yes.
Is that tin building that just went up?
No, no.
No? What are they doing?
Storage?
Oh, they're at
Oh, they're putting
Adding another building to the
Oh, okay.
There we go.
To the left?
In the back.
No, thing. Hey, let's go, let's go through this Deutsch Williams letter. See what we just saw was being brought up to date here. I guess this is just notifying Did you guys see this one? Kind of like, was it like on page three? Uh, page three of the law, the Deutsch Williams uh, packet. Attention Clerk's Office, Land Court in Boston. Land Civil Court Action Number One Seven M I S C zero 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 five oh seven, dear sir and madam, enclosed here, and this is being filed by our uh Town Council Representative, Kimberly M. Solant. Enclosed here in for filing in reference to the above titled action, please find the following. The members of the Town of Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals and the Town Building Inspector's motion to dismiss for failure to name an indispensable party with Exhibit A. Kinda show and sweet. Thank you for your attention, Kim Solant. I don't know, guess we'd really kinda have to read through this in digest to see what's uh, going on. It's set for I know. Party of the first part.
Yeah, the one that we just
So it looks like the town's out of it. The two property owners need to figure it out, and they have until November to figure it out.
The petitioner has to file in November, and then I think the
The property owner next door.
By January or something like that. The last little piece of information from the sixteen, some type of just about it actually.
We will not be moving party on summary adjournment motion, but I'll instead request disposition on behalf of the board and building inspector. So I mean, she's you figured out
She's working on it.
And she, I think she saved the town a bunch of money.
Did we uh, in her uh, Kim Solant's letter dated September twenty eighth, two thousand seventeen, dear Chairman Gaynor, enclosed here is, is a copy of the complaint that this firm is handling for the Town of Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals and the Building Inspector Picarelli. In order to properly defend this action, it's extremely important that we receive a full copy of the board and building department's entire file on this matter. We would greatly, did, did she get that?
Yes.
She has a full?
She has all.
She's got it. Greatly appreciate you forwarding it to us copies of the entire concert, contents of the file. Good, she hasn't called back and required anything else or anything like that?
No, she just said thank you very much.
We have pretty much given all that to her talking anymore.
Okay, what else do we have?
Old column, planning council, agenda.
Oh, good. Copy of this is in the file, in case anybody wants to see what, what they're doing. Alright, what else do we have?
Open meeting laws, I don't know.
From Barbara J. Gaynor.
Yeah, you might know her.
I've heard the name. The Attorney General has updated the open meeting laws, the new laws were going to effect October sixth, two thousand seventeen. Attached is the explanation of the changes that were made. If you'd like the complete copy of the open meeting law, please go to there are several additional links to check outside. Any changes that, like drastically that we're doing wrong or anything?
That's a lot of gibbergale.
I think we just need to keep noted on it.
Okay. Received. Received.
Final.
Final.
Planning board.
From the planning board. Final, site plan Dunkin' Donuts, three fifty-five Plymouth Street. The attached, updated and revised site plan was submitted to the uh, planning board for final review approval on October fifth, two thousand seventeen. The plan is for Dunkin' Donuts and retail space to be located three fifty-five Plymouth Street. These plans were previously approved on December seventh, two thousand six for the, for the building with a special permit for building over five thousand square feet and a drive-through window. The building is now under five thousand square feet, one story, three units. The revision is due to a change in of the front entryway. There is now a ten by ten patio and an added green space between the street and the parking area. This is on the uh, by the entranceway.
We would ask about the uh
What's gonna happen there?
Is there, is this, is there a permit?
It used to be uh, issued by the zoning board, the drive-throughs. It's now under the planning board.
So that drive-through goes with Dunkin' Donuts or it stays with?
I don't know that. It will be staying as is until Dunkin' Donuts opens.
Right.
They have time to transfer permit, get a new permit under seven eleven, 'cause that'll be coming through soon too.
And they have an entry exit? No entry signs. Exit. Oh, on the uh, driveway to stop and shop?
Yeah. That's existing here now, yeah.
So what are they talking about, this patio thing? Finished for uh, drive-up orders and menu signs. So now there, there's gonna be a total of three Dunkin' Donuts and two other, two other businesses? Retail businesses? I thought it's
There'll be, there'll be three units, Dunkin' Donuts and two other units.
All in one building though?
Yes.
Did it look over in there? Just, just rentals at this It's probably just rentals, yeah.
I have a lot of parking, that's a lot. Not messing around.
What was the uh, what was being removed? The building is now, the revision is due to a change in the front entryway. There is now a ten by ten patio and added
It's a patio.
Ah. An added green space between the street and the parking area. See planting area D for removal of existing maples. Doing a lot of work on this site.
That's a lot.
How big is this lot?
Forty thousand.
Just an acre?
I mean, it looks, it looks like the, the area is small right now, but once they're done, there will be much left.
Well, I know, I mean, traffic wise, it, the drive-through at Tedeschi's is horrible to say the least.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's a mess, and how many times did they come before the board to put gas pumps in there to, if you can imagine? Even more congestion with that.
They did?
Yeah, a couple times.
Wow.
They wanted to put gas pumps in the front.
That parking lot is a tough parking lot.
Yeah, that's a small, small parking lot too.
Well, I guess my question is, what, what is this parking lot compared to in size to the, to the Tedeschi one?
I think the only reason why you have a parking lot there is because of the retail stores.
Well, I'm sure the planning board, they, they have to have X number of required spaces per uh per uh, floor space, sale- saleables, floor space.
That parking schedule is actually based on a second story that was originally approved in two thousand six. When they cut it down to one story, they did not decrease the parking.
Good to know.
Seems a little bit more better as well than, than the Tedeschi's does, not those stacked parking spots, everybody's running into each other.
Actually, when you think about it, it's almost identical, really. They go down the right side, go around the back, come up the back, and go up the front, so really, they just don't have this
Parking in Tedeschi, that's why it's kind of a mess.
It's what?
You know, like they have this front up by the store, and then there's two rows here, which everybody gets all jammed up.
It's super jammed up.
It looks like they, they just determined that, you know, there'll, it's gonna either be a flower garden or something out there, instead of having a big sign. When you go to pull out of Tedeschi's, you get their, their sign, and you can't see, you gotta edge yourself out, and you're gonna get whacked.
Right around here.
Yeah.
That's true. Very exciting.
So there'll be
New brandy new Dunkin' Donuts.
Egress and out will be both in the front and on the side then? Oh well.
Is that a two-way on the side, or is that just
That's two-way, yeah.
Is it? Hmm, I didn't think it was that, that big.
No, they're gonna widen it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, they are, yeah. It's not that big right now.
How does that work? You know, 'cause this isn't an accepted way, it's gotta be a private driveway to stop and shop.
Yeah, must be, yeah.
They must have some kind of
They had a deal way back when to have access to.
Yeah.
Well, that driveway's been there for Yeah.
When it was a residential home.
Final site plan. Good to know. Any questions, comments? Look at a big donut. Thank you. Before I break something. What else do we have? Bingo. Anything else before the board would like to discuss? Or all good? How about they uh, accept the motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
In a second?
Second.
Uh, motion in second, all those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.